And then, at that point, you'll have to, I'll walk you through the appointment of a temporary chairman for tonight's meeting. So if, I'll begin with the roll call of aldermen. Alderman Hazel?
Here.
Alderman Whitaker?
Here.
Alderwoman Duco?
Here.
Alderwoman Arrows?
Here.
Alderman Randall?
Here.
Alderman Ferguson is excused. Alderman Anthony?
Here.
Alderman Ovian?
Here.
Alderman Dillman?
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Wygant?
Here.
Alderwoman Sullivan?
Here.
Alderwoman Ostov?
Here.
Okay, you've got a quorum. And so, in the mayor's absence, under section 3.1-35-35, the city council may elect one of their members to act as the temporary chairman for purposes of this meeting. Historically, you've elected the longest-serving alderman, who is Alderman Anthony. So I would ask for a motion to appoint temporary chairman.
Please, we'll make the motion to appoint Alderman Anthony as chairperson of the meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alderman Anthony? Okay, I'll do the roll call of department heads. The city treasurer of yeoman?
President.
The city attorney Horner is present. Police chief Matt Iskant?
Here.
Interim fire chief Rick Wondland?
Here.
Director of public works Jason Poole is excused. Finance director Jamie Matrit is excused. Director of wastewater Randy Smith?
President.
Director of library Leander Spearman?
Here.
Director of IT Scott Markovich? City engineer Sal Alcott?
Here.
Director of health, housing, and building Scott Tyler?
President.
Director of economic development, planning, and zoning Clifford Cross?
President.
Director of human resources William Clay is excused. Director of communications and public relations Kathy Kaiser?
President.
Okay. Turn it over to the temporary chairman.
All right, thank you, Garrett. Do I need to actually call it to all, or have you done that already? Since you've called it all?
Yes.
Okay. I would remind everybody to speak directly into the microphone and make sure that we get you on tape. The roll calls have been done. At this time, I'd ask everybody to stand in their place, please. Thank you. There is no public hearing this evening. And we can move right along to public participation. Anyone that would like to speak on city business or something that's actually on the agenda, I would ask that you keep it to two to three minutes. Is there anyone? Okay, not seeing any. Let's move right along to presentations, recognition, and appointments. There are none. I don't see any, anyway. 7A is the character word of the month. And the character word of the month is respect. Meaning showing regard for self, others, property, and those in authority. Having said that, let's move to approval of the minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the city council meeting and executive session minutes from August 15, 2022.
Eris, so moved.
Okay, got a motion by Eris?
Second.
And a second by Dillman. Questions, comments? Hearing none? All those opposed, all those for approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, motion is carried. Thank you. Let's move right along to claims, payroll, and dispersments. I entertain a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of $1,666,481.31 and $908,762.63. Can I get a motion now?
Schaefer?
A motion by second, by Schaefer, excuse me.
Whitaker, second.
Whitaker, second. Motion, all those for approval? Well, roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Arrows?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ayes have it, motion is carried. Thank you. Reports. I entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report of June and July 2022 and the statement of cash and investment report for June and July 2022.
Rothweiler, Sullivan.
Motion by Rothweiler, second by Schaefer. Questions, comments? Not hearing any? All those for, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried, the ayes have it. Item 11 is oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports for elected officials or staff. Okay, we're gonna move right along to, since we don't have any, we're gonna move right along to the streets and grades committee. Alderman Randall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 11A1, a motion to approve an agreement with Guns' Brothers Companies LLC in the amount of $20,180 for construction inspection of ForeScore and Kilmar Woods to rebuild Illinois funds.
Okay.
Eris, second.
Okay, got a motion for Randall, second by Eris. Questions, comments? Any discussion? All those?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Arrows?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion is carried, thank you.
11A2, motion to approve expenditure authorization for construction and observation of ForeScore and Kilmar Woods in the amount of $300,000 with its associates to rebuild Illinois funds. So moved.
Eris, second.
Second by Eris. Questions, comments? Hearing none? Call roll.
Duco?
Aye.
Arrows?
Aye.
Randall?
I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'm sorry, man, Garrett. It's over here.
I want to make sure that the property behind Kilmar, I call it the alley, but it's a driveway for the resident at 8525. I want to make sure that that is paved up to where they enter into their driveway. In other words, going up to where they, where they come out onto the public, into the public driveway there to get out and come back in. Sal was supposed to look at that, and I'd like to get a response from you.
I forgive you to you all. Yes, this, Alderman Ovian, thank you for the question. This is part of the plans as they stand today. After, after we have the bids, if the money is, is within the budgetary limits, then that will be done. It has been designed. It's not a big deal. We agree with you on serving the resident back there. The two residents will live back there. If, if the, if the budget is hurting a little bit, we may have to reexamine this. I can tell you, we're in for a reckoning. We have opened up one bid recently, and it was 30% over and above the engineer's estimate. And we had only one bidder for the project. So it, that's, that's a bad omen for us. So I'm now looking forward to opening up future bids. We will have, but in summary, your concern has been addressed, gladly so, and we'll see when the bids are opened.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Kent.
If it's all right, could you start roll call from the beginning again?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Duco?
Aye.
Arrows?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Let's move right along to motions, to 11B, motions from administration. I need a motion to approve the purchase of 214 North 11th Street, And 218 North 11th Street, parcel number being, I mean, they read the last, only the last three of these, these parcel numbers. Can I do that?
Yes.
Okay. Last three numbers in the parcel number is 005. And 704 Caroline Street, last three parcel numbers 010. And 612 North Charles Street, last three in the parcel is 005. All of these, these from lots from St. Clair County trustee in the amount of $3,180. Can I get a motion to approve?
Whitaker, so moved.
Okay, motion by Whitaker, second?
I have a question regarding this.
Second? Who's the second?
We.
Who's the second? Excuse me. Randall? Okay, thank you. Okay, questions?
I would like to know how many properties we're gonna have for demolition and when it's going to begin the process? Since we've added these additional properties.
Okay, roll. Oh, Scott.
That list would be the same as we had at the last housing meeting. This would not be added to that current list. This would be on our next round, which we anticipate being in the spring. There are 17 properties. We're still waiting on titles for two, I believe, and gas shut-offs for one, and water shut-offs for one. Me and Eric are gonna go through them and find out how it's gonna be paid for, whether it be the grant, TIP 3, or out of my budget. And then we have to go through and photograph everything, decide what trees, bushes need to build to property. Which houses have basements that are all considered in the bidding. So we looked at that happening within this, within September, we're hoping.
Do you anticipate the demolition to start in October?
That's gonna depend on companies. I mean, everybody is so backed up right now, taking people weeks to get trees taken down, windows put in. I mean, there's no guarantees on, I can't speak for these actual corporations. Wouldn't be able to start. I really have no idea. But I would assume the bid would all begin by then. If they actually start, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
I know you're waiting to do everything all at once, you know, when you get all the titles back and get everything worked out. Because I keep getting questions asked about properties, you know, in Ward 4. And I don't have any answers, so that's why I wanted to ask you.
Yeah, well, I mean, you should be able to address most of those. I'll put a list that we gave you. I mean, most of the properties you're gonna ask about are on that list, I think, right? So I mean, that would be the shorthand. It's all gonna get the bid on and torn down, I'm sure, before Christmas. But I can't say it's gonna be October. I don't know. I don't know how backed up Hax is or any of these demolition companies. I can't speak for when that timeline is.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Ovian. Any additional questions? Not? Would you call a roll, please?
Arrows?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Let's move to motions from zoning, from the zoning board of appeals. Garrett?
Okay. Do you want to do all or any as a group?
All.
All, okay. 11C1, 35, June 22, Shala Morton, or Moulton, request for a special use permit for a liquor license at 15th North 47th Street, parcel number 08-07.0-412-006, located in the C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248, 162.515, Ward 4. Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval with the following stipulations: in the name of the applicant only, adjoining door must be removed between the two businesses, a minimum of two cameras must be installed on the interior of the building, a minimum of two cameras must be installed on the exterior of the building with a vote of six to one. 11C2, 43, August 22, Kenzie Mordini, request for a sign installation permit in the area of a special control at 122 Musketee Avenue, parcel number 08-22.0-348-010, located in an A1 single-family residence district. Applicable sections of the zoning code 155.052, 155.053, 155.090, 155.092, 162.570. Ward 7, zoning board of appeals unanimously recommended approval with all present members voting in the affirmative with a vote of seven to zero. 11C3, 44, August 22, Kiara Hennings and Daniel Gonzalez, request for a special use permit for a liquor license at 223 East Main Street, parcel number 08-22.0-334-033, and 08-22.0-334-034, located in the C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248, 162.515. Ward 2, zoning board of appeals unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only with all present members voting in the affirmative with a vote of seven to zero. 11C4, 45, August 22, Kiara Hennings and Daniel Gonzalez, request for a special use permit for outdoor seating/dining at 223 East Main Street, parcel number 08-22.0-334-033, and 08-22.0-334-034, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248, 162.515. Ward 2, zoning board of appeals unanimously recommended approval with all present members voting in the affirmative with a vote of seven to zero.
Eris, so moved.
Okay, got a motion by Eris. Second by Duco. Questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, also.
With 11C1, I know this is the second time that it's come up, and can anyone from zoning, was it rezoned or reclassified as a bar? I know there was some issue. I believe it was an event space. And is it now just going to be an event space?
It's a lounge.
Okay, with a lounge, okay. Because I just wasn't here last meeting, and I'm not on zoning.
Yeah, that's what, that's what they want.
Okay. So it would be, and I haven't been there inside, obviously, just the stipulation that within the property, it has to be, have a pass-through?
No, you have to block off the, the second.
Oh, must be removed, I'm sorry.
So what it is, is when it came before you, there were actually two different suites, so to speak.
Okay.
She has a retail operation in one site, and she wanted to put the event space slash lounge in the other.
Okay.
Concerned was, could the liquor be bleeding over into the retail space as part of that operation?
Got it.
So that's why it was requested to go back to the ZBA so we could get a clarification within the minutes there of exactly what's going to be going in there. So that's why specifically the first condition is to enclose, there's a French door between the two, and they wanted to remove that potential for that to be unlocked, so to speak. So they removed that, and they made a condition that that has to be blocked off. It was brought to the attention of the ZBA during that meeting that most likely that would have had to been blocked off anyway because of the two different occupancy classifications between the two, and the chief could probably tell you this better than me, but there's fire code ratings that require firewall separations between two different occupancy classes. So she's really doing what she was gonna have to do, but I think they decided to go ahead and put it in the conditions just so it's in the record and for, there's no way to miss it.
Okay, thank you.
Was, I have another question. Was it also discussed about gaming in there?
Well, you can't have, well, there was discussions about gaming, and unfortunately, when you have liquor licenses, you do get gaming. Now, I think the only thing, and Garrett might correct me on this, but I think the only thing that prohibits gaming if you have a liquor license are convenience stores at this point. I know gas station or truck stops can have.
But you still have to derive more than 50% of your revenue from non-gaming?
Right.
Yep.
So that would be contingent upon how much sales she does in there in terms of liquor. And then if it's more than 50% of her sales tax-generated revenue, in other words, if it's 51%, and 49% is from the games, you theoretically could have gaming in there per current codes.
I just don't want it to become a gaming parlor.
And we cover that with the ordinance that requires that you have more than 50% of your revenue from non-gaming uses.
Okay, any additional questions? Thank you. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Call roll.
Okay. Randall?
Excuse me, do we have both a motion and a second?
Yes, a motion made by Arrows and seconded by Duco.
Thank you. Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Arrows?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Let's move to communications. Garrett?
Is it okay if I read these together?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 12A, Belleville Indy Market, October 1st, 2022. Request for Sweet Honey LLC and Seven to alter times of Belleville Indy Market, Saturday, October 1st, 2022, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and street closure 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. 12B, Click Retirement Party, November 30th, 2022. Request from McElravies Irish Pub to host Click Retirement Party, Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Street closure request, first block of North 30th to alley entrance, 12:00 p.m. to 11:59 p.m. or sooner. Additional city services, barricades, no parking signage, and picnic tables.
Motion to approve?
Eris.
Got a motion by Eris. Second?
Steele.
Second by Steele, thank you. Questions, comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion is carried. Thank you. There are no petitions. We have one, one resolution. I read by, motion to read by title only, Resolution 3455. Can I get a motion?
Schaefer, so moved.
Motion by Schaefer?
Ostov.
Second by Ostov. Discussion?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Randall.
My question is for Garrett, okay? I went out and drove ForeScore, and it's certainly in need of resurfacing. There are two apartment buildings, number 34 and number 38. The driveway is shared. The property line goes right down to the middle of the driveway. The driveway's pretty much washed out, okay? And it is an asphalt driveway. My question, Garrett, really has to do, when we approve this authorization here for motor fuel tax to be used, should the property owners finally come to some type of agreement to, you know, fix their driveway situation? What is the liability, and who has the liability in terms of any damage, okay, to the city's property?
Damage, should they fix it?
Yeah.
In that case, then I think that in order for them to get a building permit, we would, we would include in there that it is liability on their part if they damaged the city's right-of-way in the course of connecting a new drive.
Well, it's not a new drive, okay? It's replacing a driveway, okay, that is basically washed out.
Yeah, the same, the same would apply. We would ensure through the engineering department that the liability would rest on them if they damaged the right-of-way.
Okay. Does the liability go with the contractor or with the property owners?
Well, would ultimately, I would suggest that it would go with both, because one is an agent of the other.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Right, and if, if I can add, you know, I know exactly what driveway you're talking about, and that driveway's been in bad shape for quite a long time. You know, I suggest that the, you know, those, when occupancy changes in any of those apartments, I think the inspector in the city has some leeway in asking them to, you know, to repair that thing. You know, since they're constantly getting occupancy permits, I don't know if that would, could apply.
Well, at the point where they have to come in and get a building permit to, to, to repair it, we would go over that with them and what their liabilities are. Yeah.
Okay.
Point of order, just a reminder, our motion and second was just to read this by title.
Right, absolutely. And I understand that. Okay.
We've had a motion made by Schaefer and a seconded by Ostov. We just need a voice vote.
Okay.
All in favor?
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried.
14A, Resolution 3455, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an Illinois Department of Transportation local agency request for expenditure slash authorization of motor fuel tax funds for the resurfacing of ForeScore Drive and Kilmar Woods Drive.
Eris, so moved. Schaefer, second.
Got a motion by Eris and seconded by who?
Schaefer.
Schaefer, thank you. Questions, comments on the resolution? Hearing none? Roll call.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Arrows?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now let's move to ordinances. Motion to read by title only, ordinance 9075, 9084, 9085, and 9086.
Eris, so moved.
Rothweiler, second.
Okay, got a motion by Eris, seconded by Rothweiler. Comments? Okay, all those for approval, side?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And it was as a group?
Yeah.
Yeah.
15A, ordinance 9075-2022, zoning ordinance in Ray Case 35, June 22, Shayla Moulton. 15B, ordinance 9084-2022, zoning ordinance in Ray Case number 43, August 22, Kenzie Mordini. 15C, ordinance 9085, 2022, zoning ordinance in Ray Case 44, August 22, Kiara Hennings and Daniel Gonzalez. 15D, ordinance 9086-2022, zoning ordinance in Ray Case number 45, August 22, Kiara Hennings and Daniel Gonzalez.
Eris, so moved.
Okay, got a motion by Eris.
Rothweiler.
Second by Rothweiler. Questions, comments? Hearing none? Call roll.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
and Daniel Gonzalez. Fifteen D, ordinance nine zero eight six dash twenty twenty-two, zoning ordinance in Ray Case uh number forty-five dash August twenty-two, Kiara Hennings and Daniel Gonzalez.
Aris, so moved.
Okay, got a motion by Aris.
Rothweiler.
Second by Rothweiler. Questions, comments? Hearing none? Call a roll.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Arrows?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have one uh other matter of new business, and this is informational. Um s- uh city engineer Alcott can describe uh circumstance that we have that's emergent in nature. It uh, the address, it is uh a city street near forty-two Country Club Acres that has uh had a road collapse and there is, the road is totally closed. This uh was not something that was able to be put on the agenda given the timing of it. Um but section thirty-four point zero zero five uh B six provides for emergency purchases above twenty-five thousand dollars may be made in order to protect life, health, or safety of citizens. Those permitted to be, to purchase emergency materials shall be department heads, and they shall be required to submit a monthly record of emergency purchases. All emergency purchases must be approved by the city council as required by state law. So because this is an emergency and there's a fear of of continuing collapse and further collapse, the city engineer has asked me for my opinion on whether or not he could do something on an emergency basis. I citing this section, I believe that he can, but since we were scheduled for the meeting, I wanted to provide this for informational purposes, and then ultimately uh whatever expenditure would be made on the emergency basis would be approved by ratification of the city council. But I thought we'd take this opportunity, since we're here, for uh our city engineer to just describe the issue to you, just so you're fully informed of what's happening.
Thank you very much, Garrett. Uh we have, all of us finally lived through a a one-thousand-year storm apparently. So uh and you haven't had one before I, before you hired me, so uh we uh, the uh, this one storm exacerb- uh exacerbated the uh the problem that we have in the underbelly of the city. Every time we have a severe storm, it orders out the old sores, it sucks the dirt, and you have a cavern under the road, it falls in. We had three events like this that were urgent, but we we uh we took a slight risk and running, and we ran those through your body. Uh you approved them through roads and uh streets and grades and through council. Uh sometimes it's unwise for me to wait and subject the residents and the city to unacceptable risk. This particular one uh has a hole, the road is still closed, uh the size of a car underneath it. And it's only by by uh good fortune that we didn't have a car or a bus, school bus, fall into the hole. And the way we stumbled upon this, it wasn't us, it was the uh Stuckey Highway Commissioner that uh called me in uh in panic. And uh he wasn't sure if it was his or ours. If it was his, he was about to uh uh leave the country. But uh he uh shut the road down and he contacted us, we looked into it. Uh it belongs to us, unfortunately. So I can't really wait to run it through streets and grades. Uh I can't wait to wait, run it through your body. Uh and I can't act in a rogue fashion without your involvement. So uh hence we are where we are. Uh this is not going to be the last one. I can assure you that. I know enough, I have enough experience to tell you that there will be other events uh that will be as bad as this, maybe worse, that we have to act upon. Uh it just so happens that I was lucky enough to be able to uh talk with Garrett and act in in a, in a way that bring this in in front of you. So do you have any questions for me about this?
Alderman Randall?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um Sal, like you're saying that this was storm-related because um there's a number of houses impacted by mine subsidence over there as well.
Uh, yeah, and and your question, uh, th- thank you for the question, Alderman Randall. And and your question is is in distinction, where is it uh, is it storm-related or is it mine subsidence? I was out there, I looked at the hole, uh investigated the upstream, the downstream. It's one of those cases where the bottom of the pipe uh gets uh gets augured out. You have uh-
So we're talking about the same type of situation that occurred on Westbury?
Uh, yes, except this is under the road, exactly, exactly. So it subjects the pedestrians and cars and all that to falling in, actually.
And uh what is the uh the plan for fix?
Well, uh we have already started to speak with the uh, one of our contractors, contractors uh who has the infrastructure contract that sank. Uh and uh we're going to uh saw cut on either side, excavate down, I think it's uh maybe eight to ten feet down, rip the pipe out of the ground, replace it with another pipe, and backfill the road and patch the road. Uh there are other challenges in in the way that was designed, but that's ancient history. Uh we're going to keep, to keep it as it is and and do this fix. If you are interested in finding out how much money, I I will be brave enough to share with you, and this is uh probably not the wisest thing to do. In my estimation, this is uh probably about fifty thousand dollar uh ticket. Now, you know, once, once they get started, uh we don't know what, if if the walls will fall in, the retaining walls will fall in, what other challenges they may have. But as we stand here, give or take fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Sal, is that, is that a uh, is that a, is that a storm drain sewer that that we're talking about?
Uh, it is a storm drain sewer. What what happens is the bottom of, and and this is under the whole city and 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 our neighboring cities. It's a very, very, very serious problem. Uh the, I'm glad that we are here, all of us, and have taken action through the body, this elected body, to fix a lot of these problems.
Right.
Uh, the bottom of the old sewer goes out, you have no bottom, and then the rain starts washing away uh the bottom, and then all the, when when the sewer starts surcharging, it's pressurizing. Same, storm sewers are not supposed to run under pressure. Uh the pressure loosens the soil, and when the, when the, when the surcharge goes away, it sucks all the dirt back into it.
Right.
Uh and it washes down. And this was a a massive hole that appeared through a little hole in the surface of of the road.
Right, and I understand, um, what I'm trying to get at here is um, does that um, now I would ask Randy and our uh sewer committee chairman, does it fall under, is that, are those funds?
Uh, this, we're using, we're using ARPA funds. I mean, initially, the country was wanting to use ARPA funds to fix, I'm sorry, sir, are you addressing this to me?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm still, go ahead.
Yeah, uh and then, and then they, they, they became a little bit more forgiving that we can use these funds to fix our city in any way we we see fit. This is a, this is not, there's no question about this being a combined sewer. This is a a street crossing, road crossing, culvert, uh and it's strictly storm. Uh a lot of times, Randy's business and mine get tangled up uh uh with one another, and I have nothing but praise for Randy in the way he's, he's been serving and and working with us. But this, he's innocent of that. I wish I could find some-
This is solely storm-related, right?
Right.
That Sal has, it's just, it's one of those things, we've got an aging infrastructure, and this is taking its toll. And you don't build these storm sewers until they collapse. That's the sad part.
Right, okay. So we're looking at um using the funds out of ARPA tax, they do these?
That, that is correct. And generally, I I I make a habit of coordinating with all the stakeholders. I have copied uh Miss Maitre with the email to make sure that everybody's informed uh about what we're doing. So in the past, that's what we, we used, ARPA funds to fix the other uh timely problems that came before you. Uh one of them is what Alderman Randall mentioned on on Westbury.
Right, okay. Okay, um, any uh additional questions of Sal? We're not gonna, all we're gonna do is bring this back for a vote?
Yeah, it'll come back to the council as an added item uh for ratification. I just wanted to take the opportunity to inform the council based upon having the meeting tonight.
There are no other questions?
Thank you for your help with this, and thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Sal. Okay, we don't have any executive session this evening?
No.
Um-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Hazel.
Is that Hazel and Randall? All those for approval, say aye?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Thank you for another pleasant, pleasant meeting.